All the meeting to order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, everyone's present except for council member Thomas. Approval of the agenda, we have one change on the agenda, the park board report has been taken off the agenda. Is there any other changes?
You have an updated schedule of claims.
Okay, under consent agenda, we have an updated schedule of claims. Any other changes? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda with those changes?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Keith, second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes of the March 15th, 2017 regular meeting. There were a couple corrections in there that I've already gone over with Nikki and taken care of. Is anyone, any concerns?
No.
Clerical or?
Actually names, wrong people.
Oh, okay. For voting?
No, for.
Motion and second purposes.
It said Brian Fredericks was here doing the police report and it was actually was Sergeant Joe Jensen.
Yep.
So that's been changed. So. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the March 15th, 2017 regular meeting with those corrections?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Keith, second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. This brings us to our public open forum. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council?
One more.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Seeing no one, our public open forum is now closed. We have no public hearings. Brings us to our reports and presentations, the EDA report. Vicki?
Okay, the EDA met in regular session actually today, this meeting is the same day as the city council. They heard a proposal from a local business owner to construct rental fourplexes on the city's railroad property. That's the property that the city owns on Railroad Drive where we had removed some of those old warehouse buildings. They authorized the issuance of a default letter to 8310 Commerce Drive on the abatement contract, that's the Dunham Express in the industrial park and they have left, they've left the building, I guess this was. And then they have authorized the release of the guarantors on the Learning Tree Child Care Center loan because that has paid down the principal far enough to release the extra guarantors on that. They did talk about the proposed relocation of a business into the industrial park, very much in the infant stages right now, but there is a potential new person going in there. And then they received the update on the apartment complex project, the interpretive center project, and the racetrack. So, that's it for the EDA.
Questions? Okay, thank you. We'll then move on to our action items. Approved resolution 2017-19 awarding bid for Kate's Estates Project.
And city engineer Keith Yap couldn't be here tonight, he had a family emergency, so I excused him, I said I could handle this one, I hope. I hope you don't have too many questions. So at the December 21st council meeting, the council approved moving forward with the Kate's Estates Drive project and authorized a solicitation of bids. They were opened on actually March 23rd at City Hall, we had 12 bidders presenting bids for the project. And the low bid is Molitor Excavating at $152,733.85. They are of course the apparent low bidder, we did examine all the details and they did a bid tab and checked all the math and everything, so engineer Yap is recommending that we approve resolution 2017-19 awarding the bid for the Kate's Estates Drive project to Molitor Excavating and authorize the mayor and myself to enter into the contract on behalf of the city.
Questions?
Just, did that reflect, or am I wrong, in there was a curb change?
That included the curb change, the addendum. That included the addendum.
Okay.
And this is the project that takes water and sewer all the way around the Indian Mountain and terminates at Main Street. A lot of people are getting confused about which one we actually approved. And it also includes the stub up on kind of the north end of Kate's Estates Drive, so a potential future connection over to the golf course.
Okay, thank you. Is Keith Yap worked with Molitor before?
Yes, we have.
Okay. I didn't recognize the name as far as anyone lately that we've ever had him.
We haven't had him here lately, but the city has used him before, plus Keith has experience working with them.
Okay.
He did the paperwork on Oak Street.
Oh, that's right, they were a sub for Oak Street.
A sub for Oak Street, okay.
Now they're the general.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2017-19 awarding bid for Kate's Estates Drive project to Molitor Excavating and authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into a contract on behalf of the city?
So moved.
Motion by Keith, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Any other comments, questions? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Approved resolution 2017-20 awarding contract for mill and overlay project.
And as you know, previously the city council, we obtained bids for the mill and overlay of State Road on Ninth Street from the State Road to Ash. And then that was awarded to Tri-City Paving on March 15th. And in addition to that base bid that we awarded, we also had an addendum to allow us to do additional mill and overlay projects within the city. And depending on what there, the cost was, then we were gonna look at what streets we could do. And so after reviewing those bid amounts, we updated our quantities and we selected two block sections of roadway that we're presenting tonight for approval. And that would be just for a basic mill and overlay. And the one is Pine Street South, and that is from Sinclair Lewis Avenue to, almost all the way to Second Street. You can see on the road where there was at one time another portion of that was already done. And then also First Street North, and that would be from Main to Pine, so that's up by Riverview Manor. So those are the two sections of roadway that we are recommending, it's a total estimated cost of $43,576. But the final number is actually based on actual quantities. So we don't bid the contract amount, we bid the price per quantity and then they bring in the tickets, the low tickets, and then we pay that way. But the estimated total cost is $43,576. So this project along with the base bid totals about $106,000 of our $110,000 budget. So we're looking to approve resolution 2017-20 awarding the bid to Tri-City Paving for the mill and overlay project addendum and authorizing execution of the contract documents.
Questions, comments? Go ahead.
Are these two extra addendums, are they part of the, are they kind of on the running list of the capital improvement for the street plans of what we intended to address this year?
These are mill and overlays where we wouldn't be doing the underground work.
Okay.
So they're kind of our ones that we get the road service back in shape, but on the other side, we're doing a more in-depth, I guess, study to bring back for you future projects. And so these are outside of there, so we're comfortable doing them, so.
I just was wondering regarding the last two meetings ago when citizen Jeff, was it Jeff?
Yep.
Had addressed his, his street, so I'm not sure if there's like a priority list that they're running through.
We're actually evaluating all the streets now.
Okay.
And then that'll be married to the public utilities decades map for their water and sewer.
Okay.
But we're not complete with that yet.
The thing with him, I think he, he lives along Park Lane. But I believe he was talking about Willow and Hickman.
He mentioned Willow, yep.
Yeah, and I think that is on our.
Willow and Second, that section is actually currently at the very near top of our list when it comes time for a major reconstruct.
Oh.
So we wouldn't want to mill and overlay that and in two years tear it up, right?
Parks, Park Lane, there's no plans.
I think he might have been talking about Willow.
That's, yeah. Park Lane is, I believe, a free street for, no one's being charged for.
I just got one question. The Pine Street from Sinclair Lewis the Second, is there any more construction work gonna be happening? The, you know, we know St. Paul's Church is looking at another phase. And a couple of them houses, I think, have already been claimed, so when those people are ready to move out, those houses are gonna be coming down? Is that something we need to look at before we go and do a mill and overlay? Because we could have heavy equipment back on that road again if that would come of, I just thought of this when you were mentioning, and I was just wondering whether or not we should be considering that timeline.
Do they, do they have an idea?
I have no idea.
It's just, it's kind of known that, you know, they eventually would like to own that entire block. And as people are willing to sell, they may pick it up and convert that to parking. And right now, I'm not aware of any of them that have been sold back to the church.
Okay, well I knew it had been, it had been talked about, but I didn't know whether if there's any, that phase comes quicker than we think, if we wanna spend.
So then they would probably be in there with some demolition and paving, parking lot paving.
Yeah.
Not maybe real heavy equipment, I don't, I don't know. You know, and they might come in on Second Street, I can't say for sure, but you know, we could certainly talk to them afterward and say, hey, if you're gonna be doing work here, you know, come in from the backside.
Right, okay. Just a concern I have before we spend money on something that might get beat up in a couple of years or tore up, so. Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2017-20 awarding the bid to Tri-City Paving for mill and overlay project addendum and authorizing execution of contract documents?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Any other comments or questions? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Approved resolution 2017-21 authorizing execution of documents, apartment closing.
This is the last, last time will be for the city council for approval on all the documents relating to the apartment complex that is going in. What we're looking for tonight is approval to execute the balance of the closing documents, including the minimum assessment agreement, the warranty deed, the stormwater utility easements, the closing statements, affidavits, the storm pond maintenance agreement, and there's a couple other closing type documents that need to be signed at the same time. And so the city attorney, Tom Mayer, worked on it with their attorney, so the two attorneys are talking with the closing company to make sure that they're all comfortable with the closing documents. And then Warren is gonna come in tomorrow pending your approval tonight, and we'll be signing all the documents, sending them down there on Thursday. They'll be closing on their end and then they're ready to pick up their permit. Their permit's already been approved, and they've already had that part of it all done. So we'll be looking at is when frost goes out, or not frost, but when the road restrictions go off and they can get their contractors in here, they intend to start right away. So, good news. So we're looking to approve resolution 2017-21 authorizing the execution of the closing documents.
Questions, comments?
Will that, will that road ever be closed for a period of time?
Main Street North?
Main Street North.
We don't anticipate that it will be. When we're in coming around the corner with doing our sewer and water, you know, we're gonna terminate in the right of way, we're not gonna be in the roadway, but that doesn't mean there might be some equipment moving around, but we don't intend to close the road.
Okay, thank you.
Keith? Any other questions, comments? Do we have a motion to approve resolution 2017-21 authorizing execution of closing documents?
So moved.
Motion by Heidi, do we have a second?
A second.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Approved resolution 2017-22 approving minor subdivision.
Rick and Carol Schneider, they live at 1026 Lakeshore Drive, they've submitted a request for two minor subdivisions off adjoining property. The adjoining property is owned by James Flowers. And the two fragments will be split off the adjoining and consolidated onto their existing Lot 5 to create one larger lot. I did include a copy of the certificate of survey along with before and after photo or pictures of how they will look, the lot lines, and then also an aerial. You can see that the proposed lot line is the tree line where Mr. Flowers will retain the field and the trees will go to Mr. Schneider. And the attached resolution approves the splits and then to be combined with the parcels. And then when they're recorded at the county, the old lot lines will be removed and the parcel will be one. And then he intends to build a garage next to his house on that extra lot. And so what we're looking for is resolution 2017-22 approving the minor subdivision.
I'm glad you gave us the before and after because it didn't, it was very hard to understand.
It is, it is hard to understand because the legal descriptions are long and lengthy and I wanna take a piece off of this and a piece off of that and.
Right.
And, but when you look at the aerial picture, you can see, it kind of makes sense.
Right. Because actually before he owned part of that field then, or that one lot was part of that field.
Lot 6 was part of the field, yeah.
Yep, okay. Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2017-22 approving the minor subdivision?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Any other comment, questions? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Approved resolution 2017-23 authorizing sale of vehicle.
This vehicle that's being requested for sale is a police forfeited vehicle. Brian Fredericks chief has requested that it be advertised for sale and declared access and advertised for sale. It's a 2001 Dodge Ram pickup truck. The attached resolution declares it as excess, offers it through sale, and we would do it as well through the Minbid online bidding. And that is resolution 2017-23.
Comments, questions?
I'm just, just curious, where's the site where that can be viewed and bid on?
It's under the state of Minnesota administration, but if you were to Google Minbid, M-I-N-N, Bid, B-I-D, it would take you right there.
Thank you.
Yeah, this should go for a high dollar, you know, it's only a 2001.
Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2017-23 authorizing sale of vehicle?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Any other comments? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four in favor, none against. Senior Center Board appointment.
We do have a request for an appointment to the senior center board, it is a three-year term. The senior center board is actually made up of a varying number, anywhere from five to 15. They do have to be citizens of Socks Center, one-third and two-thirds in the greater Socks Center area, which is kind of the school district is the way we look at it. And we did have a request by Robert Essler to be appointed to the board for a three-year term effective January 18th, 2017, and expiring December 31st, 2019.
Questions, comments? I think Bob would be a very good candidate. Do I have a motion to appoint Robert Essler to the senior center board for a three-year term effective January 18th, 2017, expiring December 31st, 2019?
So moved.
Motion by Keith, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. We now start our unfinished business, ordinance managing placement of cargo containers.
As you know, the city council rejected the ordinance presented by the planning commission regulating the placement of cargo containers on March 15th. The planning commission has scheduled a new public hearing to consider the adoption of an amended ordinance on April 11th, so that's next Tuesday. And so the commission is requesting input from the council on which parts of the ordinance were unacceptable, so they can prepare an update. And in addition, we talked about the moratorium, due to the recent legislative changes, they've narrowed the reasons that you can extend, and our ordinance didn't fall within that. So we were not able to extend the moratorium. So this is kind of just information only, except for the request to get back to Sarah maybe with some, I think Warren, you talked to her about what parts of it you felt were unacceptable, so that we don't end up, you know, sitting there looking at the very same one again.
Right.
But that's just information at this point.
Okay. Any comments, questions on that? Phone system quotes?
The operations committee heard proposals from three companies regarding the phone system upgrade, and as a result, they did request additional information from the companies, which was to be available the week of April 3rd. And actually, one came in yesterday and one came in today. So I'll get together with the two of them and we'll review those and we hope to have a recommendation to the city council. What kind of changed was, we do have fiber in the building, it's like comes into the server room and it's just kind of rolled up in the corner. And we wanted to get estimate on what it would cost to activate that fiber, and then how much our monthly internet cost would be with fiber versus the way we're doing it right now. And then of course, that changes everything for your phone system if you go that direction. So we'll see what those quotes look like when we open them up and go over them, and we might have a totally different answer than what we started out with, but hopefully we'll have a proposal at the next meeting.
Okay, any questions or comments on that? Okay. Getty Street Improvement Project?
The Getty Street, as you know, we're getting toward the end of that six-month time period to order the improvement on Getty Street, and because we do have a signed purchase agreement for the interpretive center, we did schedule this for an agenda item on April 19th, which is the next city council meeting. At that time, the city council can decide whether they want to order the improvement and stay within that six-month guideline. If you don't, when the time comes to do it, we'll just do a new public hearing. So it's not imperative that we do it, it's just, you just have to repeat the process later if we don't order it now. So that will be something on April 19th, and Keith will have some updated information at that time as well.
Questions, concerns? And we'll go to new business, Sunday off-sale liquor authorization.
And some of you probably have heard this, but Governor Dayton signed into law recently, changes that resulted in the ability to have your off-sale liquor store open on Sundays. Previously, Sunday off-sale was not allowed, and that takes effect on July 2nd. Our city code does not allow Sunday off-sale, so if we want to allow it, we'll need to amend our code. So we're looking at, you may be getting some direction from the city council, and it doesn't have to happen at this meeting, but just kind of, there's some different people out there that some are saying, oh yeah, we'll be open, and other ones say, no, it's my only day off. So you kind of have to look at, you know, our license holders and, and find out, you know, how they feel about it, I think. Or, you know, we either don't allow it or we do, and then they can choose to if they want. So, kind of something that we'll have to do. I know that someone in the city's opened up the Sunday after he signed it, and it's like, oh no, it doesn't go into effect yet, but July 2nd, and that is a good time because our liquor licenses renew on July 1st. So it would just roll into that.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
Are individual communities, or cities I should say, allowed to refrain from having Sunday liquor?
Yeah. If we kept our code the way it is, it would be more restrictive than state, which is okay, we just don't, wouldn't allow it.
Would that affect, say we allow Sunday liquor, that wouldn't affect the cost of the liquor license or anything?
Sunday on-sale is already allowed. This is just Sunday off-sale, which is, you take a bottle off the premise. That's what a lot of people get confused with on and off, but it's the liquor stores.
But say one of the liquor stores won't decide, we say it's okay.
Then they can choose whether to be open or not.
Right. But I mean, is, would that affect the amount they pay for a liquor license for off-sale?
No, liquor license is set by statute, it's the same either way.
So it's not treated like the 2:00 closure? I mean, they can opt to close at 2:00 AM?
And we don't have the 2:00.
We don't have a 2:00.
We do not, okay.
No, but they could opt to, but the 2:00 one is extra fee at the state, where this is not.
Okay, okay.
It's one of those things that I think that's an individual business decision. I don't believe government should be telling the business when they should be open and not open, as long as they got all the permits and the licensure to cover what is required. You know, that's my personal opinion, but.
I agree.
You know, as far as I'm concerned, we should look at our city code and update it.
Yeah. Has, has there been any studies, is there going to be an impact on say enforced law enforcement or?
And they, they say the law enforcement isn't, really this is, this law is really written for all the border cities where you're in Moorhead and you need a bottle and you run to Fargo because Fargo allows it on Sunday, maybe Fargo doesn't, I don't know, but you go over the state line and you can buy it, so then the in-state loses that business. Here in Socks Center, you might not see a loss of business because they're gonna buy it Saturday or Monday. You know, they're not gonna drive all the way across the state line, so it's really for, around the state lines, whether there's any, I'm not aware of any studies of whether having it open on Sunday has an impact on law enforcement or not.
I don't know how you would, I'm just kind of trying to figure if it's gonna.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna create any more problems than it would the other six days out of the week, but it is a concern. Any other questions or comments on that? Deferred assessments?
Okay, we have a policy allowing for the deferment of special assessments in instances of like senior or hardship or disability. And in the past, some were given for until developed, is what they were called. And we have some that we've been carrying on the books for a long time at the principal amount. And of course, there's no interest that's charged, so it just stays the same and you keep carrying it as a receivable on your books. And we have three in the until developed one and one that's until hooked up by sanitary. The three until developed are, there's one at the Socks Center Public School, which is an assessment on East Street where the driveway behind the elementary school hooks up, and that was deferred back before the elementary school was built and before that driveway was there. And I don't know if it was the intent of the council when they put in their driveway that that was considered a developed parcel or not. The second one is Holy Family School, when Second Street South actually was done last time, it was the one that went along behind the playground, before the playground was developed the way it is right now. And the third one was Ag Power up on 12th Street. Between 12th Street and the highway across from the substation, there's a triangle lot there that they've made into a parking and display area. So all three of these are not developed by a house, but they're used, so I thought maybe it might be time to reevaluate that and maybe send it to a committee and, and decide whether it's time to start collecting those. And this actually came up on, as part of the audit to want to know, you know, how long are you gonna carry these?
That's just what I was gonna ask.
So they're just, they're really old ones, they're not a lot of money, it's just that, they were just putting the until developed one, which we don't even have that authority anymore.
And, and as far as these locations right now, they'll never be developed because they're either too small or.
Not by a home, not by a home, and I don't know what until developed, what their thought process is, what, what's the definition of until developed was at that time?
Right, right.
But they are being utilized.
Oh yeah.
For advertisement or?
Yeah.
Access.
They just never had to pay the assessments because it wasn't developed.
And these were street assessments, these weren't water and sewer.
Right. So, yeah, which committee would you recommend going to with this?
Well, it is, it is part of our assessment policy, so you might wanna go to policy with it, you know, I was wondering, that's up to you.
Yeah, that would make sense because the two, it would go hand in hand with that assessment policy.
Do you need a motion to that effect?
I think general consent.
I'm fine with general consent.
I think it should be sent on.
Okay, request for handicap parking sign downtown.
We received a request for the installation of a handicap parking sign downtown, and we've had other ones in the past as well. And we were looking at it, and because of the parking's kind of at a premium downtown, we thought maybe we should kind of review the whole picture of the downtown parking before we start sticking signs in here and there. And so I actually am recommending to send that also to committee for review. And at that point, then we'd bring a map of how many stalls we have, which ones are handicapped, and look at those compared to where people have requested to have handicap signs installed.
That's a good idea.
That would probably go to operations.
Okay.
I would think.
Sounds good.
That brings us to our consent agenda. We have our schedule of claims, unpaid claims of $169,471.90, paid claims of $1,460, for a total of $170,931.90. I think those are right since you even gave me a revised schedule of claims. Vicki?
Pardon me? Yeah, the, actually.[1761.04]
The totals changed?
The totals changed on the, the spreadsheet that I gave you.
Okay.
Up by 10.
I just realized you gave us an updated schedule of claims, and those numbers didn't get changed.
No, you had that in your packet already.
No, but not the revised one.
So, the updated amount is 179,52940, and what that is, is it includes the, uh, first-quarter building official fees, to the building official of 10,057 dollars and 50 cents, so a grand total of 180,98940.
Okay. And then we have resolution 2017-24, accepting contributions of 181 dollars and 4 cents from the men's card-playing group to be allocated to the senior center, 25 dollars from Robert and Jeanette Stansbury to be allocated to the senior center, and 100 dollars from Snap Fitness and Sock Center to be allocated to the ambulance department, and I wanna thank those three parties for those donations on behalf of the city. Uh, we have gambling application for exempt permit requests from Knights of Columbus, 4863, for a raffle and bingo on July 26th through 30th, 2017, at Stearns County Fairgrounds. Gambling application for exempt permit requests from Sock Center Lions Club for pull tabs and a raffle on July 26th through 30th, 2017, at Stearns County Fairgrounds, and a request from Sunshine Shaney's, DBA Shaney's Tavern, for a temporary extension of premise permit for a possible cookout starting at 11:00 AM, and a dance and back parking lot on May 6th, 2017, with live music from 5:00 PM to 12:30 AM. Is there any questions, concerns with the consent agenda? If not...
Just one question on the, on the, uh, outside music, 12:30 AM, was that the time that was, or is that...
Yeah, that's the time that we set.
That has been set.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions?